This is a meeting of the Franklin Township Public Library Board of Trustees. It is Wednesday, June 26, 2019. I see that we have a quorum. And I will start by with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Calling the roll. Ed Ward. NBC.
Here.
Iris Kislin. Agnes Culebagna. She's not here. Mayor Philip Kramer. Kevin McNeil.
Here.
Tom Lennon.
Here.
Nick Champa. That's me, I'm here. And also January Adams is here. This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act, also known as the Sunshine Law. The schedule and notification of this meeting have been provided to the Courier-News, the Home News Tribune, and the Franklin Township Clerk. Copies have been posted in the library's vestibule and are also available at the reference desk. Would now like to open this, open the public portion of this meeting. Is there anyone who would like to? Seeing no one wishing to comment, I would, I will close the public portion of the meeting and ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our prior meeting.
I saw move.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Think you've all had a chance to read the minutes. Seeing no discussion, I will call the roll. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are accepted unanimously. We shall move along to the directors' reports. First, the financial report. January?
As usual, we have the first one. We're now almost all the way through the year. So we have the oil branches, we have the Franklin Park portion, and then we have revenue. And there's nothing, to my mind, that's unusual on any of those.
If I may ask, you have maintenance automation. Is that for our copiers and computers and such?
No, that's for, the top one, yeah. That's for Cersei Dynex. That's the...
I'm terribly sorry.
That's for Cersei Dynex. That's the automated catalog checkout system.
Ah, okay.
Are there any other questions on the financial reports?
Yet.
Thank you, January. And how about the program report?
How about it? The summer reading programs began on June 15. And it was also advertised at the opening day of the farmers' market on June 1. During May, we had 1,636 people at 101 programs. And probably the biggest news in this report is that the new museum pass reservation system went live on June 12. And patrons are quite happy with it, especially the print-at-home portion of it, which means they can print out the pass at home and go directly to the museum. It's not on all the museums. I think it's just on three of them. But hopefully that'll expand. And we had our extensive spring cleaning over Memorial Day weekend, so hopefully the library looks better than ever.
Yes.
And that's it.
Are there any...
Oh, no, actually, it's not it.
Okay.
It's not them, so I... Or maybe that's... Maybe I'll save this other stuff for later. It's about buildings.
Buildings, okay. I would note that Mayor Philip Kramer is with us. I've passed out a president's report. I think you, have you all had a chance to look it over? There should be some...
I didn't get one.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
Thank you.
The main thing here is the Lewis Street Community Youth Center. And happy to say that at last night's council meeting, a bid was approved for $9,777,000. And apparently, initial construction work will start next week.
Wow.
Well, next week, they're going to start on the parking lot.
Yeah, okay.
It's always something.
I mean, don't expect to see steel going up next week, but yes.
Well, that, that makes me feel good because after reading what your first...
Yeah, there'll be times. Time for changes, adjustments to the library space.
Yeah, I personally, well, January and I did discuss this, and we're both a little bit surprised that the architect didn't contact us about, even in when, even while going ahead and making some rather major changes in the library space. Even without making changes, I would have expected an architect to contact a user for input. That didn't happen, but we, as Mayor mentions, we will catch up with that.
Is, do we have a timeframe that we should be doing it, or they should be doing it? Or have they been notified that, that we are...
I'll deliver this to Mr. Bornacker tomorrow.
Well, we will have this meeting. It was two or three meetings, two or three months ago, that Mayor Kramer suggested that we have a meeting. We tried to have that meeting, but it was, it was then decided by the township that we should wait until the bids have been received. Now that has all happened, and so now we will proceed with not only the meeting with the township, but we will request a meeting with the architects. The other thing on the president's report involves a piece of land that the Board of Education owns near the Franklin Park School. And we have talked about getting, having use of that land, either by acquisition by the township for a branch to replace our Franklin Park branch. Things are going pretty slowly, but where we are is, we, January has hired Van Cleef Engineering to contact the DEP and get a determination, a presence or absence determination, as to whether there is, there are wetlands in the area that we're interested in. Subsequent to that, I mapped out the area that we have of interest. And today, I requested that the engineering department mark it out with some flags so that Mr. Harris of the Department of Environmental Protection can examine it and give us this determination, presence or absence. If there is no wetlands on that property, then we will continue with our talks to the Board of Education and make it, try to make it happen.
When they did, when they did the site plan for that, for the whole area there, would they never did found out if there was wetlands in that area?
We haven't done, that's what we're doing now. We have not done that with this particular piece of property, so...
No, I'm talking about the Board of Education did not, so we don't know if they...
Well, I don't know whether they did. The school is what, 15 years old or so, and whether they did or not?
You're talking about the Claremont Avenue school?
No, no. This is the Franklin Park School on the other side of Claremont Avenue.
I know where it is, but I thought you were referring to the Claremont Avenue.
No, the Claremont, I initially thought that was a better location for a branch, but the Board of Education, when we met with three, three or four members of the Board of Education, they said, "No, that's out because of water retention and so forth." So they didn't even want to talk about that.
Is there enough parking there?
I'm sorry.
At Franklin Park School, is there enough parking?
Not for us. They have a large parking lot, and this would be adjacent to the parking lot. As I can show you, here's an aerial picture. And pink dots show the area that we're interested in, and it's all wooded. And adjacent to the area we're interested in is the Franklin Park parking lot. And it's, you can see that we would need enough space to build our own parking lot.
We'd have to build our own.
Yes, yes. Perhaps overflow could be into their parking lot, but not as a regular thing.
How old is that school?
I believe it's about 15 years. I'm not sure.
I don't remember it being built, and I've been here 20 years, so I doubt...
It's much older than that.
I doubt it. I think it's older than 20.
It's much older. I mean, 15 years, that, that school's been there.
So it's older.
It's older.
I've been here 19. Same please, same clock.
It's a, it's a very nice, it just, to me, appeared to be a rather modern building, that's all. So I guessed. Is there any, are there any questions or discussion on the president's report?
I'd like to add something.
Yes, January.
This is an update from the State Library about the Library Construction Bond Initiative, dated June 8. And it's long, I'm gonna hand it out to everybody, but the, looks like what they're saying is, they anticipate grant applications being due early in calendar year 2020. So we're kinda cutting it close.
Yes, we have to get moving with the Board of Education.
And do you have, at what, at what level, when you apply for the construction grant, do you have to be shovel-ready? Do you have to be...
They haven't said yet.
Okay. So it dehooves us to move.
Right.
Last time, when we did this building, we had to show them architectural plans.
So at least to that, we should assume that we have to be to that point.
Because of the time restraints, I would say that, once we get the...
We all got it.
Once we get some approval from the Board of Education, which would involve transferring the property, the piece of property, not to the library, but to Mayor Kramer's township. So there will be cooperation and speed needed on both the Board of Ed and the Township Council.
Yep.
Is it two pages? I don't know. It's two pages.
I've got one, also.
Okay, so...
I need two again.
The other thing that I found out with regard...
One.
Which one do you get? Second one?
You have the one, I got pages three and four.
I apologize, I should've taken the...
I have one and two.
Oh, you have one, two?
Thank you.
Somebody's watching on television, thinks all we do is shut up.
Does anyone have page nine and 10? Okay. Also, with regard to building of public buildings, a friend of mine who works in code enforcement in another municipality told me that we are now under a set of standards which was approved in 2015. And that, very soon, a new set of standards called the 2018 standards will come into play, and they're a little tougher. So if we can get in with any kind of a application before this new set is adopted, that would be to our advantage, apparently. Is there anything else about president's report or associated subjects? Moving along, I'd like to say that Agnes is with us. Thank you. Hello, Agnes. Thank you for stopping by. Next on the agenda is correspondence. Our packet included some correspondence from January.
Yes.
And I'm sure we all read it, and most of us read it, and I read it.
I thought they were all interesting and important. I mean, the tariffs on books, children's books could go up by quite a amount of money because of the tariff fight with China. And then we have the ALA news, which, this is the real downside to having audiobooks and ebooks, is that they can change it from perpetual ownership to just a couple of years, and then it's...
It's gone.
It's gone. It's gone.
So is, is that just for libraries?
Well, that's for everybody.
That's for everybody.
No, wait, this was for, no, this is for libraries. This is for libraries, yes.
So when you buy a new book, I mean, my wife does, I was, I was under the impression that it was yours.
That may be different, yeah. Which is really unfair, isn't it? How come you get to keep it and we don't?
I don't understand, I really don't understand that. I mean, you purchase it, so it's not, so you're not, you're renting it.
We're renting it, yeah.
And there's nothing, I mean, it's not, they're not regulated or any, that's just, I mean, it just doesn't seem...
They do things to, many things to libraries I don't like. Like, one of them is, when we have a subscription to a magazine...
Right.
The library has to pay more than an individual.
Why?
They say it's because more people are looking at it, and they're losing business.
They should be looking at it, that more people are, have access to it, and might...
And looking at their subscribers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And might, and might want to, you know, they might, they might gain access to somebody,
yeah, yeah.
Right, to say that maybe this is somebody who would never, you know, buy it in the first place, would, you know, get it...
Get a subscription.
Subscription. So is it the same, it's not the same thing with books, right? I mean...
No, books are, books are cheaper. Print books are cheaper.
Print books are cheaper, and you know, it's more because, you know, more people are gonna be seeing it.
That's true.
Now, I have a question. January, I don't know whether I understood what this company was doing. Were they giving a library the choice?
No.
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 It's all, every library gets...
Effective July 1st, they're gonna do it.
Every library is subject.
Yeah.
And that's just this one company?
That's that one company, yeah. But oftentimes, others follow.
Seems difficult for me to realize how they're going to enforce it.
Oh, well, it would just stop working. It would just, it'd just be gone.
They have the technology to cut it off.
Okay. Okay, but there won't be, yeah, there won't be selected customers who continue to have it.
No, there shouldn't be.
Because otherwise, you could work around it with reciprocity with the library who has it.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the third one was about the Marrakesh Treaty, which was interesting because if you look at the first sentence, it's more than 90% of the world's published materials can't be read by people who are blind or have a print disability. So this treaty hopes to make things more equal, so it won't be a copyright violation.
Yes, it is.
Anything else on the correspondence? Let's move along to old business. Anyone? How about some new business?
Maybe old business, I commend our, I said I commend you for being here all the time when we have a meeting. Old business.
I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of a personnel matter.
So you need, I need to...
Will someone move to, go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session.
And I second.
Okay. And the purpose is personnel matter?
For a personnel matter.
Okay.
Do I turn this off?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Do you want to turn it off?
I'll get a whiz.
Magic hand.
Probably do. Yeah, like I said.
January?
Yeah, you better. I'm not an IT person.
Sure, go there.
This is our case. Did you get it on?
Yeah, I got it now.
Can you hear me now?
It's music.
You're doing just fine. Yes.
You missed my show.
No, you was, you was great. You was great, but you didn't sit at the head.
I sat the...
Yeah. That was my only critique.
Oh, Lord.
Had a nice day today.
It was.
It was gorgeous. A little warm for me, but I wrapped it up in all the rain.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
We should be.
So now we can come out of executive session.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
Let's wait for Iris to come back to...
Do you have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
I really, we have to move along.
Okay, is there a motion to...
To come out of executive...
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Kevin made a motion. Tom seconded, to come out of executive session. Those, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We are out of executive session. Is there, I'd like to entertain a motion concerning the salary for our director for the fiscal year 2019, 2020.
I make a motion. I make a motion for the salary for 2019 to 2020 for our executive director.
Is there a second?
Second.
She's smiling.
Is there any, is there any discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none.
Well, they haven't voted yet.
Well, I'm just trying to help things along.
Seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And...
For those watching, I don't get a vote, by the way.
Okay. The motion has passed. And...
Thank you again.
Okay.
You deserve it.
Oh, thank you. Can I see, I didn't catch everything. I don't know the amount. I mean, I heard part of it, okay. Okay, I didn't, I didn't hear the end of it.
2006:30.
Okay. I didn't get the 6:30.
Okay.
And for the minutes, or simply we discussed the executive session minutes, which I guess we can say in public, we just discussed the salary. I think that's pretty obvious from the vote.
Salary and the evaluation.
Right.
And the annual evaluation. I'd like to, I don't see Anne here. Open the...
Oh, wait, is that...
She's there.
There she is.
Yeah, want me to get it?
Sorry.
Iris, I wasn't able to record your vote. Is your vote affirmative to the salary?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, this is unanimous. I have missed her vote.
So Anne, I didn't see you out there. I missed calling you in, and there was a vote to increase her salary to $124,630.
I'd like to open the second public portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to have any comment?
No, I would like to have the correspondence, the financial report, and the president's report. If anyone wants to part with their copies, I would appreciate it.
I'll do that.
That's all I can say.
Yeah, it's okay.
And the salary is in line with other directors.
Here is a president's report.
Does anyone want to give mine to Bornacker?
The LKA articles, if anyone want to part with their copy.
I don't even have mine.
I always, I always keep mine, so I know what I've given.
Okay.
There you go.
I have my nighttime reading app.
I guess this is some theory executive session material, although it's public.
No, that's not executive session.
No, that, we looked at an executive session, though it's all public information.
Seeing, is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I would close the second public portion of the meeting. Confirm that our next meeting date is August 28, 2019. We will not have a meeting during July. If anything comes up, we will call a special meeting.
Well, yeah, they're gonna be looking at the wetlands, and we're under the gun to get things done. We may want to call a special meeting to discuss...
As soon as I hear anything, I'll be contacting everybody.
I'm gonna be away from August 4th and through August 17th.
Will a special meeting be posted?
Yes.
It has to be posted with, for how many days? Five, is it?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight hours?
Hours, forty-eight hours.
Forty-eight hours, so...
Fourth to the 17th.
First time in 10 years.
Okay.
Don't have a vacation.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I saw...
I just want to, can I say something?
Yes.
Before, I was looking at this, the programs, and I just wanted to pay attention, just say something about, you know, you have this computer basic instruction class, and one that was entitled fake news. And I just want to say that that's important. It says adult. Is that just open for adults? I mean, I guess so. It says it's, it's on adults, but I just think because...
Do you want me to ask? I mean, there might...
No, no, it's, okay, so what I'm saying is that, like, I think that's so important now, right, in the, in the environment that we're living in. And I've seen things that are incredible, you know, on social media with my nieces and nephews, that I think maybe that younger people, I don't know what it entails, or maybe it's, I wanted to know, like, if it's something like to...
Adult content.
Show people, right, how to spot it, or, you know, you know, how, because I think that's, that's really important, because if you see some of the stories that are circulating widely, that, that people who I thought were smart.
Yeah.
Really. I mean, everything from exploding headphones to, you know, new capital punishment machines that rip the head off, I mean, you, and they were, they were circulated, and there were people with comments, you know, that, that, you know, were sharing these like it was, like it was true. And I, and I think that if this was something that showed people how to, you know, spot a fake story, or how to, how to, you know, dig a little bit deeper so you can, you know, see and check the source, that it might be something that, that would be beneficial to even younger people, you know, and when I saw it on the adult event...
I will pass that along. I will pass that along.
That it might be beneficial for younger people to, to be able to distinguish, you know, the difference between, because some of them, you would look at it and think that, okay, anybody would know that this is a fake story, but not so much.
Sometimes not, sometimes not.
And feel free to give me, I have a 6:30 mark.
Thank you.
But I think that what you have to keep in mind, and I don't know the answer, because I don't know who's presenting the information, but I think a lot of it might be geared for parents who are older, because...
How the work we get folks.
A lot of the... A lot of the parents are not involved or overseeing in the time and the content of what the kids are looking at, and that's a very big problem.
Okay.
Thank you for the suggestion. I'd like to say, I'll press that on.
Very, very thoughtful.
Thank you. And now, if you have a motion, I mean, I'm sorry to have gotten, but I just wanted to-
Motion to adjourn.
I second.
Those in favor?
Yeah.
We are adjourned, and it is about 7:29.
And the ma, and the mayor says, "Good night, Franklin."
Be well, Franklin.
Be well, Franklin.
9:06.
So somebody's watching.
I am, I am watching. A lot of times I watch and there's no sound.